One to the August the 3rd meeting of the Glen County Board of Commissioners, I would invite you to stand and join us in the invocation by Commissioner Booker, followed by the pledge by Commissioner Strickland.
Heavenly Father, come before you once again with bowed heads and humble heart, thanking you for this day. Thanking you, Heavenly Father, for waking us up in our right minds. Heavenly Father, we ask that you put a hedge of protection around our law enforcement, those who guard our posts near and far for us, to help us keep our freedoms here. Heavenly Father, but be with them no matter where they travel to, Heavenly Father. And Heavenly Father, we ask that you guide us tonight, guide our decision-making, guide our thoughts, Heavenly Father, it would be all of you and none of us. We ask all these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We have no public comment tonight, so I will proceed, and we're very honored tonight to present a proclamation to the recognizing the Gullah-Geechee Nation Appreciation Week. And so I will read the proclamation at this time. Whereas the Gullah-Geechees have made history by being either aboard the last documented enslavement vessel to North America, which arrived at Jekyll Island called the Wanderer on November the 28th, 1858, or by being part of the igbos of Ibo Landing that resisted enslavement, and whereas Queen Quette, chieftess of the Gullah-Geechee Nation, has done ceremonies to honor the souls of Ibo Landing on St. Simon's and of the Wanderer on Jekyll Island, whereas Queen Quette has worked with Gullah-Geechees in Glen County to establish what is now the St. Simon's African-American Heritage Coalition and the Gullah-Geechee Board of Brunswick, in order to ensure that the history of Gullah-Geechee continues to be told, and whereas the Gullah-Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival, which moves to various parts of the Gullah-Geechee Nation and the African diaspora each year to educate the world about and to celebrate the continuation of the Gullah-Geechee tradition, has been celebrated locally each August, and whereas a series of activities will take place throughout Glen County, Georgia, to honor the history and legacy of the Gullah-Geechee Nation during the Gullah-Geechee Nation Appreciation Week, and we join in celebrating the theme of celebration of self-determination. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed that July the 30th through August the 5th, 2017, is the Gullah-Geechee Nation Appreciation Week in Glen County, Georgia. In witness there, I will set my hand this third day of August, 2017. Bill Brunson, Chairman. Would you like to come up and say something?
Good evening, Commission. Good evening, everybody. What do ya, anything like that this evening? It's so glad if a deal. This year did a Queen Quette Day in Brunswick, August the 3rd annually. So we told them not robbery for day of this evening, we're on a chilling and thing like that. We want good on the lonely bit more to go and thing like that, because we know most unwashed, we right up on this coastline in this city. But I know on a chilling when no, y'all stand right at crack my teeth and say. Now, for the rest of you that moved here, I know it's a little more difficult. So I'm so happy to be back here, and especially on my day in Brunswick, because this is Queen Quette Day in the city of Brunswick. And so to be in the city of Brunswick, in the Glen County, receiving this today, I take it as my gift for Queen Quette Day. You can also give me a piece of property here, it's no problem. And so that we can definitely have a permanent place for people to come and celebrate Gullah-Geechee history, heritage, and culture. I was just here a couple of weeks ago for the Black Wall Street Festival, the first one, starting here in the town as well and in the county, but I've been here so many times for the various other festivals and celebrations, and you know, the water to bring me, the water going to take me back. So I always love coming down the strip and being able to see the water coming in and going back, because I did just a little bit the other way this week in South Skakaleki. And so my home is in Helena Island, and this year is where we will celebrate the Gullah-Geechee Nation International Music and Movement Festival, starting tomorrow and going through Sunday. So I have invitations here for all of you to come and attend, and later to come down to our Gullah-Geechee Gold Rice Festival we'll have for the first time this year. But throughout the rest of the weekend, and one of your citizens said to me when I first walked in, he said, "Queen Quette, here he goes." He said, "They cut you short. You ain't got but a couple more days left in the celebration here in town. They were on for that. They owe you another week."
We'll extend that.
Thank you. So you heard the motion made by the chairman. Well, we knew the second, and we got it voted in, and so we know that every day is a day for Gullah-Geechee culture here in Glen County. We just thank you for honoring that legacy. And this year, our theme is "Foe ancestors." So we continue to celebrate self-determination for we ancestors. So thank you, thank you, Glen County, for celebrating with all of we. And if you want to follow the rest of the activities, follow @GullahGeechee and go to GullahGeechee.info, so that Hunter can come and join me this weekend and shout "Aliwala" and thing like that. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you very much. We are honored to have you. We don't have any property, but we do have a proclamation.
Yeah, we can, we can exchange. I want that paper from him, too.
Before, before we move on to the agenda, let me just say a word of appreciation and thanks to our finance department. They have been the recent recipients of two awards. One, the distinguished budget presentation award for fiscal year 2017, and the other is a certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the comprehensive financial report, the Carfer. These awards come from the Government Finance Officers Association, and Ms. Miller and your staff. We thank you. Congratulations. I understand this, we've 15 years in a row on one, 30 years in a row on the other, and I suppose the naysayers would say, "Well, that's just a rubber stamp." But I suggest not. I suggest it's the result of a lot of hard work. It's part of the budget process, and Mr. Howes, congratulations to you and your team for being an integral part of that, and so we're very, very proud of what you folks have done and being recognized for it. So, thank you. All right.
Chairman, Commissioners, Commissioner Booker requests that this item be added to the published agenda. Can I make a motion to add item 12.1 to the published consent agenda to approve the removal of Orion Douglas from the Coastal African-American Historic Preservation Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second and discussion. All those in favor of adding this proposed motion to consent agenda under 12.1 signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve all items on consent agenda, general business, except for any items any Commissioner so wishes to pull.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to pull item number seven, please.
All right, item number seven. Is pulled for discussion?
Mr. Chairman, second motion.
Okay. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving consent agenda with the exception of item number seven, signify by raising your right hand. Thank you. All right. Commissioner, item number seven. Go ahead.
Basically, I don't understand why we need to establish a Glen County Audit Committee. I was elected by the people of Glen County to represent the people of Glen County. I attended the last audit session we had with the auditors for Glen County on our financials, and they explained the shortcomings, the pros and the cons. I understood their shortcomings. I understood Ms. Miller's rectification of those shortcomings they found, and I don't see any sense in putting a group of three or any number of citizens between us, our auditor, or the finance committee to explain these audits. If a Commissioner needs, wants to understand what's going on, I suggest that the Commissioner read the reports they give us. They're quite explicit. They tell us exactly what the issues are, and we get our update from Ms. Miller as to the corrective actions. So I'm not in favor of establishing a Glen County Audit Committee made up of private citizens, when that's what we're here to do, gentlemen.
Okay. Thank you. Any other comments?
I got just a question. What exactly would the Audit Committee do? I mean, is it, it's got some laws laid out, or?
It basically, Commissioner Coleman is an advisory committee. It would report to the Board findings of the audit. It is recommended by this same Government Finance Officers Association, under best business practices, for all state as well as local governments to have an audit committee. Frankly, I've never served on a board that had an audit that didn't have an audit committee, but I certainly respect Commissioner Stanball and his, what his opinion is there, but I think it could provide a very valuable service for the Board of Commissioners. It is an advisory committee. It has no power to hire, to fire, to buy, to enter into a contractual agreement or anything else. It is strictly an advisory committee that hopefully can break down what I feel is a very, can be a very complex and complicated audit, and that Citizens Committee could put it in some type of layman's terms that we could digest and use. We've had an audit here with 10 years of repeat findings, and I believe if there had been an independent audit committee in place, that that wouldn't have been the case. And so that's my, that's why I supported this and do.
Mr. Chairman, will they be looking at some of these other auxiliary departments as far as the Airport Commission and the EDA?
No, sir. The way that, and Council, you can weigh in here anytime you want to, but the way that this is structured, it would be exclusively for the audit, and that's what they would, their focus would be.
So our audit doesn't impact those two entities in particular in any way, or is not impacted by them?
I'm not sure I understand. You talking about the Airport Commission?
And the EDA.
And the EDA.
Those are two major, I don't know if you would say auxiliaries, but...
Yeah, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what you mean by impacted, but Ms. Miller, you want to address that?
I would. So the airport is a blended component unit in our audit, which means that they, there, right now, they have a separate audit done, and their numbers are blended in our financial statements. So you will see them as an enterprise fund in our statements. But right now, the way that it's set up is they have a separate audit, and they would have findings separately, so I would think that they would address those unless there's something that rises to the level that the Board of Commissioners needs to address them. However, we have talked with several members of our Board and members of their Board about when we issue an RFP for auditing services next year, to include the airport as an option to bid on, to have one audit under the same umbrella, because they're flowing into the same financial statements. So they do impact our financial statements, and...
Well, that's my concern. Are we responsible for what happens there ultimately? And with the EDA, not just the Airport Commission?
Ultimately, this Board of Commissioners is responsible for the Airport Commission. I mean, they are your agency that A Board of Commissioners created many years ago.
Right. So that's why, because I don't understand, I'm not a airport person, I guess, and if we're gonna have somebody advising us, like this audit, then maybe they could help me understand better how the airport is operating and the financials. I mean, we have a lot of huge grants that go out there, and even the relationship between the commission and the tenants better. So I'm just trying to figure out, in my mind, how this Audit Committee would be helpful to me as, you know, as a district commissioner, and so that's why I asked the question.
I'm going to ask the same question, but not about EDA or the airport, but about the clerk's office. The clerk's office is...
Pardon me? Which is what led me to ask that.
Yeah, which is, which is what led my fellow Commissioner to ask that. But, you know, that's where I've had so much angst when it comes to auditing and what's going on in a particular office, that we may or may not have any response. Well, we got, I know we have some on the budget, but we have two sets of dollars over The audit that we do every year, that we're talking, that we do, does it address the clerk's office, number one? And number two, does it also look at, does it audit the budget? If it does, and, you know, it goes without saying, that it looks at the budget dollars, how that's going. But how about the money that they take in from the court, court ordered intake, if you will, and how they dispense of that? Because we, we're, we're, we're over there doing an audit now, going back many years. So how does our audit fit in with what's going on in the clerk's office?
So each of those constitutional officers' offices are audited.
By our auditors?
By our auditors. And each year, the auditors came back and said, "The, the books in the courthouse are not, they don't flow, they don't tie in, they're not, they're not big enough." So we had a significant deficiency, year after year, telling us that internal controls are weak in the clerk of superior courts office. And when we have those significant deficiencies, it is management's responsibility to fix that. But we came into issues with, we tried to go into the offices to fix that, and we were not allowed to go into the offices or have access to the records. I mean, and in answering your question, the, it is prudent to have an audit committee. It is prudent to have an outside set, because when the auditors come in, they ask staff, "Are you aware of anything going on that shouldn't be going on?" And they respond. And then they ask management, "Are you aware of anything going on?" And then they'll ask the Commissioners, they, I know some of you have been called in at different times, and then they would ask this Audit Committee. And they would, so the Audit Committee would be able to review the audit and would be able to ask questions, give their professional advice. I know Mr. Brunson's intention was, these are people who are used to looking at audits that we would ideally have on this Audit Committee. So they're used to looking at it, and they may see something different or wrong and ask a question. But, I mean, ultimately, the Board of Commissioners is responsible for that audit. They're responsible for hiring, firing the auditor, and the auditor answers to the Board of Commissioners. So this outside board would be providing advice, free, we're hoping, to better our product. That's all.
Tanya.
Sure.
The findings that you speak of in the clerk's office over the past, were they related more to the budget that we furnish that office, or are those findings related more to how the money that comes in from the court, if you will, is handled?
Those findings were related to the monies coming in through the courts, because the budget to, so our budget funds the operations of that office.
Right.
That is controlled by what goes on in the Finance Department. If they need to buy office supplies, it comes through the Finance Department. Their payroll is in that budget, that comes through the Finance Department. But what they did not have were adequate controls over when money comes into that office from someone who comes to pay a fine, or different money flowing from the courts that are coming into the office, and then you have to have specific separation of duties, so one person is handling this, and then another person is paying people, and then another person is preparing a deposit slip. That was all the same person. That's what those deficiencies were, that were in the office.
Okay, so my next question is, we have a new clerk.
Correct.
Okay. We hope we don't have the problems we had last time if we come up with significant findings. And we were told, I don't mind saying it, we were told that, you know, by the clerk of court, that, you know, they had everything under control over there, they didn't need us to come in and do the audit.
The previous one, correct.
They didn't have to let us come in and do the audit.
Right.
We were told, they did not have to let us come in and do the, I say do an audit, to look further into these findings.
Right.
If we have an audit in the future, that has significant findings, and we want to go over there and look, and the, and the current clerk says, "I got it, I got it under control," if we're told the same thing by that clerk, what are we gonna do to get in there and look at his books?
What are you gonna do?
I think I just asked that question.
If you did.
I think what you do, after you look at, after you look at the seventh, eighth, ninth, and tenth repeat findings, you go to the Court of Public Opinion and talk to, I mean, they're elected just like we are. And I believe an Audit Committee would facilitate going to the Court of Public Opinion to get, I mean, my problem is, my problem is, I see repeat findings, repeat findings, repeat findings, and I talk, I start talking about materiality, and nobody wants to talk about materiality because they haven't counted the money. They don't have a clue what's missing. All they know is the procedures are grossly flawed. And so I just believe that a committee of citizens would be useful in the Court of Public Opinion were, God forbid, that situation to come to pass again. Look, I, you know, I...
Ms. Miller, I have a question, based on what you said about, and let's go back to the clerk's office. How would an Audit Committee change the situation that we face with that?
I think that's where the Court of Public Opinion would come in. I think that was Mr. Brunson's...
Well, I understand that. Far be it from me to ever go public with anything I'm upset about. I would never do that. I would never get on the radio, or call anybody, or call the newspaper, go public about something like that. And if I had known about this thing with the clerk's office before it came out to us, I probably would have, but I don't see where the Audit Committee would have done us a whole lot of good in that instance. Another question I have, something you said, it's my understanding, are we, are we not, is the county not, or are we taking over the audit functions for the Glen County Airport this year?
We are going to issue an RFP with that as an option, and so we are going to say, give us a price on an audit for the county, for an audit for the airport, and for an audit for the, both of them combined.
Why are we doing it as an option? Why don't we just bid it? If we are financially and legally responsible for the operations at that airport, it's no different than your department, or any other department, Public Works, Parks and Recreation, or anything else. Why are we breaking it out into sections and making it different? Why are we not just getting a quote and a bid to audit Glen County, including our airport facility? Who made that decision?
That's the direction that I heard when I spoke to several Board members, and I talked to some of their Board members as well, but again, this is your audit, it's your auditors you're hiring, so we issue the RFP any way you would like.
Okay. And I'm not getting on you, but I want to tell my fellow Commissioners, I sure would like the opportunity to vote on that procedure, if that's how you've been told we're gonna do it. I was under the impression that as a county Commissioner, I had a say in how this is done too. So if we are going to, for the first time, take over the airport auditing, I'd like a say in how that's done, not just have direction given to Tanya Miller on the phone or behind closed doors as to how we're gonna issue an RFQ, gentlemen. And I don't know who that was in here, and personally, I really don't care, but I'm gonna tell you right now, if you want the Court of Public Opinion, I'll be more than happy to get on the radio here in the next couple of weeks and talk all about this, if that's what you'd like to do. Thank you.
So if we're not, if we're doing this for the Airport Commission, why aren't we looking at this for the EDA as well, if we are ultimately responsible for this?
The, the EDA is a separate legal entity from the county, but the Airport Commission is not.
Okay, so we're not responsible for the EDA?
Correct.
All right.
Mr. Stanball, would you like to make a motion to, would somebody like to make a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to deny the acceptance and creation of, or adoption of the resolution of bylaws created in establishing the Glen County Revenue Study Committee.
Revenue study or Audit Committee?
Excuse me, Audit Committee.
Have a motion? Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor of not creating and establishing the Audit Committee signify by raising your right hand? Okay. All those opposed? All right, then we will not have an Audit Committee. Okay, general business, are we at general business?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Consider adoption amendment to section 233 and 237 of the liquor, malt beverage, and wine ordinance of Glen County pertaining to the state of beer and wine for consumption on premises of hotels and motels. Who's got this one?
I do, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, go ahead.
So this specifically has to do with a new hotel called Home Two Suites on the McKinnon Airport property. It's immediately adjacent to the FBO, services a lot of transient population coming in and out of our community. The hotel does not have a bar, does not have a restaurant. It, I believe, has 88 rooms or thereabouts. They serve sandwiches, they serve salads, they serve various forms of eats, and a refrigerator by the lobby desk, and soft drinks, waters. They've requested that they be allowed to serve beer and wine for consumption within the confines of the hotel for guests staying there, such that they don't need to travel, however far, to purchase these if they, if they so wish to consume, consume... however far, to purchase these if they so wish to consume them. And with our county attorney, we've drawn up an ordinance proposal that has specific hours of sales. It specifies that this is for onsite consumption for residents of the hotel, and it's being done because they simply don't have a restaurant or a bar. Currently, Glen County ordinances do not allow for beer or wine sales unless you have one or the other. So that's the background. Happy to hear other comments.
Commissioner Murphy, did, so the people that would be purchasing this, I heard you say, are actually staying in the hotel. I'm assuming they're going to have some sort of identification to just keep people from walking in the front door off the street? I mean, would you have to identify yourself as a motel guest or?
I suspect that would be the case. I don't think it would be very difficult, as this is a relatively small, not quite a boutique hotel, but a small hotel. And simply for the convenience of the guests, this will not be a moneymaker for the hotel. They're not looking to enhance revenues to any significant degree. It's just convenience of guests, that's all it is.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to adopt amendment sections 2-3-3 and 2-3-7 of the liquor malt beverage wine ordinance of Glen County pertaining to sale of beer and wine consumption on premises of hotel and motel.
Second.
Have a motion and a second discussion. Hearing none, this is not a public hearing item. All those in favor of the motion to adopt, please signify by raising your right hand. That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number 14, consider adoption of amendment to the liquor malt beverage and wine ordinance of Glen County pertaining to the sale of beer for on-premises consumption at locations licensed to sell Growlers.
Yes, sir, this is mine also. I just wanted to be known, I'm not the liquor alcohol czar of Glen County. I do not wish to be. It's just coincidental that these two items turned up this week or last week at the work session. So specifically, this has to do with a somewhat of a niche and relatively unique growing business within our state that has to do with sales of microbrewery and niche beer items in a store called a Growler Shop. Multiple municipalities around the state have these Growler Shops. Athens would be an example, several suburbs, and Atlanta would be an example. And the concept is that the patrons walk in and the only alcohol that's sold at these establishments are beers. And they buy glasses of beers and they may or may not decide what they like. And if they do decide they like one, what they then do is they ask the proprietor to fill up a jug, the so-called Growler, which is a take-home jug, which is then filled with that specific type of niche beer product and is sealed, not hermetically sealed, but sealed tightly enough, it's not as if people are going to go out and pop the cork and drink it on the street. It's sealed to go home and for consumption later. So that is, would be a change in Glen County. That would be a new type of liquor alcohol license establishment, and that's why it's on our agenda tonight. When I first heard about it, about this type of establishment, because I honestly have never been inside one of these stores, either here or elsewhere, it concerned me that we're talking about, you know, what might be construed as going to a bar one evening and ordering your third drink, fourth drink at closing time and telling the bartender to put it in a to-go cup and walk out, you know, and drink it on the way home. That is not what this is about at all. This is a well-sealed jug for later consumption. And furthermore, I was a little bit concerned that it could be construed as, you know, going to a bar and then walking out with a 12-pack of Bud Light underneath your arm. And that's not what this is about either. This is not a bar in the common sense. It serves craft beers. It does not compete with the typical bar downtown or out in the village of St. Simons where you can buy multiple types of spirits and beer and wine. This is strictly for beer sales and it strictly has to do with these Growler-type establishments and nothing more. And I want to emphasize that it should be not confused as creating an adverse environment for either packaged storage sales or bar sales. So, long-winded way of saying, multiple municipalities and counties throughout the state have permitted this. We were able to obtain some of the ordinances from other areas around the state. Attorney Mumford worked with them and we've come up with the ordinance, so we're not sort of reinventing the wheel. We're taking the best practices of other areas and trying to allow this type of business to thrive in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Any other comments? This is not a public hearing item.
I got a question. Aaron, in this draft that we have here, I brought this up one time before, that person that goes in to sample the beers, is there a limit to how many samples he can get?
No, sir. No, sir.
So, I mean, you know, from the picture I saw in the paper, you got eight or 10 taps there. If he decided to tap each one of them, that's eight or 10 samples. I'm assuming you get, what, ounce, two ounces of taste there?
This is not a sampling ordinance. I have seen those types of ordinances in Georgia, but this is not a sampling ordinance. If y'all wanted to go in that direction where you wanted to have limited samples of two or three ounces and no more than, you know, two or three samples per visit in a 24-hour period, you could. But this is not a sampling ordinance in that sense.
So what you're saying is they go in and say, well, let's just use the word sample for practical purpose. I'd like to sample that one right there. So they get, what, a mugful?
They could get a mugful, they could get a pint. I mean, they could give them a sample of it, but this would allow them to not, this would not limit them to a certain sample size. But they could give samples if they wanted to. They could sell samples, they could sell a pint or multiple pints. This would not limit the amount of beer that they could sell for on-premise consumption. Again, I have seen ordinances that are like that in the state, that are more pure sampling ordinances, either samples of wine or beer, that do place limitations on the amount of consumption per visit on there, and those are out there. But the way this has been drafted, it would not limit that.
They would actually go in and, once again, I want to sample that one out there. They would pay for that sample?
Correct, they would pay for it. I think that's envisioned, but I don't think there's anything to prohibit the vendor, the establishment, from giving that sample away.
Right.
They could give it away, but that's their business model, I suppose. Or that's up to their business model to decide if they want to give it away or sell a pint or sell a sample or give away a sample or a pint. But I don't, this wouldn't address that business side of how they would do that.
So they could crawl up to the bar, ask for a pint of a particular beer, consume that, and then ask for another, or another, or another?
They could.
With no cap on that?
Correct.
Counsel, I think where Commissioner Coleman is going here is, the owners there is on the bartender or the owner of the establishment as far as how much alcohol they're willing to pour down on a patron.
That's correct, commissioners. And this is limited to just beer sales. It would be a beer specialty shop, but it would be up to the establishment, the owner, and whoever's tending bar or tending the establishment to ensure that someone is not overserved.
Yes, I think that's very important, that any establishment that sells alcohol, either in our county or in the state, you know, the server is obligated to use very careful judgment when they do that. And the other thing, it's important to note in this circumstance is that currently, that's the model within the store, is that you go in and you buy the glass or mug or whatever you wish to call it in the store, and if you want to have two or three, you're able to. The difference is, you know, this model of the business that the Growlers are built on would then allow you to select which one you want to take out of the store for later consumption. And these are not typically the types of beers that you could just go and pull into a convenience store and even to a package store and buy there. So they're sealed up in these Growlers. And, you know, the real problem with this type of store that does specialize in just beer products is that it would be a real economic challenge to be successful unless they were allowed to sell these Growlers as well for takeout. So hence our discussion this evening.
I think that is the problem that we're trying to deal with here, is that the fact that this market will not support a Growler business if you, as we know it, and as I've witnessed in, you know, in larger communities with larger markets, I think the business model is wrong, you know, for this location. And we've been trying to accommodate this business. It's not the first time or second time we've tried to do something to accommodate and try to make their business model work. They went from the original business model of just Growler to going in and less selling Growler for sale for consumption on premises to, well, we're just sell for consumption on premise. But either one of those will work within the way we license alcoholic establishments. And I want to remind everybody that you call it a Growler, but it's no different than packaging for any kind of other beer, whether it comes in a can or whether it comes in a bottle. You can call it craft beer, but we're dealing with it because it's beer. It's an alcoholic beverage. I don't care if it's a craft beer, if you call it an IPA, you know, an India Pale Ale, whatever you want to call it. This is an alcoholic beverage. If you're going to allow people to go in and sit at this place and drink and then take their Growler and have it filled and walk out with a craft beer, we have other establishments on St. Simons that sell craft beer by tap. And they could also fill up these same Growlers, and I'm sure they would also like for their customers to be able to walk out with their Growlers filled. But there, they can't do that because they serve alcoholic beverages for consumption on premises. The bars, the other bars on St. Simons Island that are selling anything and everything that it takes to stay in business are not asking for us to turn our ordinances upside down to accommodate their business plan. They developed a business plan that works. You've got to know your market and you've got to get in there and compete. And we dole out licenses for sale of alcoholic beverages for one or the other, and if the businesses make it, they make it. If they don't make it, they make it. The business plan and having the right market is what it's all about. We had a little different deal, but we had a Red Lobster come into Brunswick, had wrong business plan. They had to pack up and leave. I don't believe Glen County is ready for a Growler business. And I want to make it clear, whether it's a Growler or a can or a bottle, we're talking about letting people walk out the door with alcoholic beverages. And we don't let them do that in other places if they can sit there and drink. You can't buy it, take it out the door. And so let's don't fool ourselves. We're going to go down this road and if this doesn't, if we turn our ordinances on its head and if this doesn't work, are we going to be sitting here, maybe we're to request to let them go from a so-called specialty? You know what, I think Budweiser is a specialty, you know? But are we going to be sitting here and being asked, well, can they expand and go into selling Budweiser and Miller and everything else? You know? So we, I don't think we need to go changing our ordinances because the business plan's not successful. I wish it was, but I can't support this.
Can I respond to that, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, well, with all due respect, Commissioner Browning, I don't think we've actually had a situation where the actual Growler business model has been allowed to exist within Glen County. And what was being asked for before was sort of a partial of what other successful establishments across the state have been allowed to do. And that's what we're asking this evening, is to give them the full breadth of capacity to be a true Growler store. And to suggest that somehow Glen County isn't ready for a Growler store when they're all over the state, that's just, to me, is really concerning. I know we've never done it that way before, but I would submit, maybe it's time to try something a little different, allow this business to thrive here. It's only one store in a county of 85,000 people. They serve only beer. There's multiple, multiple, multiple other places that people can buy beer, buy spirits, buy wine, become intoxicated. This is not one of them. That has not been a problem related to other Growler establishments. So I just, you know, I recognize it's a new way of doing business in Glen County, but I think it's time we kind of broaden our perspective and our minds to try something maybe a little bit different we haven't done before and see what happens. And I don't think, and I know they're not competing with these other establishments that sell thousands of other spirits and wines and beers. It's just a, simply a craft beer industry that, look, I'm not a millennial, but apparently the millennials really enjoy this type of thing. And there are a lot of them that come down here and are looking for an establishment like this in our community, and I think it's reasonable to give it a try. Thank you.
Mr. County Attorney, quick question. This thing is written specifically for Growler factories, correct?
Correct.
And we have a class case for that, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So if the Growler factory wants to be a bar, they have to meet those requirements, correct?
Correct.
If they want to be a lounge, they have to meet those requirements, correct?
Correct.
If a lounge or bar wants to be a Growler factory and sell on and off, they have to meet the requirements to be a Growler factory, not a bar or lounge, correct?
We wouldn't let the, or this ordinance would not let the traditional lounge or bar also serve Growler, or serve Growlers. This is just for beer, especially a shop, is what it was defined as last year when it was rewritten. So this is just on-premise beer sales along with off-premise Growler sales.
That's it.
I'm sorry?
Just for the Growler factories.
Correct.
And they have to meet the requirements to be considered a Growler factory.
Correct.
Okay. Well, gentlemen, you know, I made these comments in the work session. Where I came from in Pennsylvania, I came down here, I was like a kid in a candy store. Well, I could buy beer and wine in a grocery store. It was forbidden in Pennsylvania, couldn't do it. They just changed that, by the way, about a month ago. Now you can, but for years you couldn't. Of course, I could walk into a bar, drink all night long, walk over to a cooler, buy a six-pack of beer, walk out the door with it. My point being that regulations are what they are. They're what is set and we get set in our ways. I totally understand that in Georgia, selling at the Winn-Dixie beer was totally normal. In Pennsylvania, where I came from, that was taboo. Didn't happen. It's just something that was, but it's been changed. This Growler- This growler factory, I don't know if it's going to make it. I don't know if the population's here to make it or not. I have no clue. But I'm willing to give you the shot, and this is something the state recognizes, just like wine shops. The state recognizes that wine shops may do samplings and tastings and then sell on-premises, and then turn around and sell bottles of wine because people are trying things that are a little expensive just to try, not knowing. These beers are custom beers, you know, microbreweries, there's the stuff that you just don't walk into Winn-Dixie and buy, those types of things. And gentlemen, at this point, if we're going to try and regulate personal behavior, then I think we're barking up the wrong tree, you know? This is something that I don't think's going to hurt the community. If the business makes it, it makes it. If it doesn't, it doesn't. Maybe somebody else come along and make it work later on. But I don't see where this is really any kind of a detriment to the community to do this. Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, I'd like to call a question.
I would, I'd like to make one comment in reply to that. If you don't see anything wrong with this, and again, I say, call it a growler shop, call it what you will, but you're going to have people going in there and drinking on-premises, and then they can take packaged alcoholic beverages out the door with them. If you don't see anything wrong, let's try it in all the establishments around here that are bars. Let's let them go in and drink, and let's let them take a package out the door. That's what we're talking about.
But on the agenda, move on.
Well, that's what you're about to do here, you're about to open the door up for that.
Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to adopt the amendment to the liquor, malt beverage, wine ordinance of Glen County pertaining to the sale of beer on-premises consumption at locations licensed to sell growlers.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor of adopting the amendment for the growler factory signify by raising your right hand. All those opposed? That's five to two, I think, if I'm counting correctly. Thank you. Good luck to you. All right, we have executive session tonight.
Mr. Chairman, what more item was added to the agenda at the beginning of the meeting?
It was consent.
Oh, is that on consent?
Yeah.
My bad, my bad.
Excuse me, something about reading?
The...
Well, the alcohol czar that had you all flustered.
The...
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to go into executive session for personnel matters.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor? Thank you. Congratulations, Mr. Davis. He'll put your fence up.